Where do you want to sit?
I don't want to fit.
Guess that's a beauty. Good. All right, I get to say this every year, so I can continue to say it. It's just the thirty seconds that I get to be in charge while we take nominations. So I just, I need a nomination for president. Do you have any nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Will Strong.
Okay.
I'll send him.
Don't need a second, just need a nomination. Any other nominations? Here none, all in favor of Mr. Strong as board president, please raise your hand. Okay. Six oh. Mr. Strong, you have to be dressed. Show them what we're gonna do.
Do we move or do we do it from here? It don't matter, mate. It's a meeting call.
Yeah, that is our call.
All right. We now need nomination for president. Board is open for nomination.
All on Lake Troy. I'd like to nominate Dean. Okay, any other nominees?
We now vote, all over the favor of Troy. All one, two, three, four. All over the favor of Dean. One, two. Troy it is. We now need nomination for secretary.
I nominate Dean.
We have a nomination for Dan. We have a nomination. All right, let's vote. All over the favor of Dan. Six and oh.
Now we have treasurer, so historically that has been our bookkeeper, so this historically been Monica Ray. I'm assuming with Monica retiring, I would like her to stay in that position until, my preference, your choice obviously, until July 1st. And then after that, our new bookkeeper, Kelsey Crossden, will take that position. That is totally the board's decision.
We, we can also have a board treasurer, is that true? We have had in the past.
I've made that before. I've not had that, but I'm not saying we can't.
Well, we've had a, in the past, we've had a board treasurer. And they didn't actually keep the books, but at any time they wanted to, they could pull their stuff from on up.
You can do that anytime. Anyone can do that at any point. Absolutely. No worries to you. Don't make the board's decision.
Well, I would like to make nominate Dean a person for treasurer, but still use the district, perform the duties, and still be responsible for what they do. But just give her the authority to look over books, which means just officially.
What would be your option? We have a nomination for Dean as treasurer. Any other nomination?
You know, this would also help with, you know, our audit when it comes in. Uh, usually states that there, you know, talks about their office personnel, not being enough, uh, people to look at them. So I think this might help a little bit.
All over the favor of Dan. Six and oh. We now need to elect an MSBA delegate. Board is open for nomination.
All on Lake Dan.
Dean? Any other nomination? Vote. All over the favor of Dean. Six and oh. We need a, we now need to elect an MSBA delegate alternate. Board is now open for an offer. All on Lake Troy. Any other nomination? We need to vote. Troy for delegate. All over the favor. Six and oh. Troy for delegate.
Need to jump back up. My fault, I must, we need to certify the official election results. That's me. So I can, I'll read those to you.
Okay.
Sorry. So in Douglas County, we had Michael Stewart with five hundred and four votes, Vern Deathridge with five hundred and fifty, Kenneth Fleetwood with five hundred and fourteen, Mark Henry with five hundred and seventy-four, Troy Treadway with five hundred and ninety-one, and Will Strong with five hundred and eighty-eight. In Ozark County, Michael Stewart with nine, Vern Deathridge with eighteen, Kenneth Fleetwood with seven, Mark Henry with four, Troy Treadway with twenty, Will Strong with twenty. And in Christian County, we had three votes. Um, Vern Deathridge had one vote, Kenny Fleetwood had one vote, and Mark Henry had one vote. Just need to certify those elections.
We need a motion. We need a motion to certify the vote. Board is open for, a motion. Motion been made, we have a second. Ten seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six and oh, if that. We're getting away to six thirty. Good to see everybody up there. Must have been a couple of months since everybody got to come in. Governor opened it up to phase two. Maybe in six months, it will have been a blow up on the radar. We need to adjourn the reorganization meeting. Board is now open for. Dan.
We have to adjourn.
Motion been made by Dan to adjourn the reorganization meeting, and seconded by Troy. Any discussion? So we're running. We're adjourned. Six and oh.
I've tried twice, I know. I've tried twice. I should try to put myself back twice.
As I can, I can use the little things I can do there.
As long as I can hear you, talk loud.
Oh, I can talk loud, I have to.
Just do this.
We didn't know you had this.
I didn't hear you.
You have a hearing to excuse. What did you get your mic?
That's not for you, that I can't. I used to drive a race car.
Oh, that, did you hear? They, you know, they had.
Yeah, I used to sue.
Doctors, physicians. You didn't hear me.
Did she just talk about my hearing?
It's six thirty. Now called a meeting, board. Uh, I think the first thing is our pledge of allegiance. I'd like for Troy to lead us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we serve. One nation, under God, in the fifth world with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the meeting agenda, May financial summary fund balance statement, minutes of the May fourteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting, payment of monthly bills. We have to, I think Eddie Horner pulled out, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Do we have a motion? I'll move. Board made the motion, do we have a second?
One second.
Mark seconded. We need to vote on it. Discussion? I got a question. On the bills, uh, this came up about a month ago in the morning. A guy told me he was downtown at one of the lumber yards and, uh, there were some, a couple of guys in there that he didn't know, and he knows most of the people that work at the school. And they were up there buying parts and charging it to the school. And they signed for it and walked out the door, and he said, thought that was a little unusual, so he stepped forward and walked up to see who they were. And he didn't really tell me who they were, I think he knew, but he didn't tell me, but he said it was a plumbing and electrical company of some type. So that kind of concerns me about who's authorized to go get stuff at the lumberyard. And I was kind of wondering, uh, when they do our audit, are, do the auditors ever check on that?
So it would only be a district employee that would be allowed to sign for something, and all of those that come through a hardware store, a parts store, go through Mr. Valentine.
These were not district employees. They were contractors.
I'd have to check on that, if that's not the, Mr. Valentine approves all those bills for people like that and signs off on those purchase orders, you do the, the, sorry, general.
So have we ever signed the contract with KPM?
Yes, they've been here for their initial audit.
We have signed the contract, you signed it? So it's a way to get out of that? Because according, according to MSBA policy, our policy, the, our own school, the policy DIE states clearly the procedure to obtain an auditor, and it's clear that the policy is not followed, okay? We are required by this policy to take the lowest bid. And we didn't.
Okay, are we?
We are required.
I, I know, I'm not, I'm not just arguing that, but we approve the consent agenda, or?
I'm asking, I'm, that's part of it, and I want to know, since we're discussing the bills, if there's a way to get out of the KPM audit and give it back to Thomas and Douglas like it should have been going to to begin with, because they were the chief of purchase, least expensive bid. And I looked at both of their bids, and their bids, there's nothing different, that there would be any reason that we wouldn't or shouldn't have given it to Thomas and Douglas to begin with.
I thought there was a difference. I thought there was a difference in that they had unlimited calls or something at KPM.
Yes, but no one.
Thomas and Douglas didn't necessarily have that. That, it's odd, it's been a while, it's been what, two months?
No, that's what was in there, but we also, but no one contacted, Dr. Dial even said he did not contact Thomas and Douglas and asked them who would be able to call them anytime if we had a question, and Thomas and Douglas agreed to that. They have no problem with that.
Actually, in the KPM, if you give it up, look at it, it says exactly the same thing, basically, that Thomas does. It says in their bid that they will charge you for a phone call. So they said the same thing.
I think it said. I think that word is different.
It was different, the wording was different, you're correct. But you also stated that you never did ask Thomas and Douglas if they would give us unlimited calls.
I did not.
And they said they would. Okay, so we're talking five thousand dollars a year, almost difference. And according to our own policy, they should have gotten the bid. I mean, we gave the bid to mow the lawn out at the field for a fifty dollar difference. You're talking about over a five-year period, over twenty grand, that's a lot of money. So I'm asking, because I don't know.
Yeah, I was under the impression that there was.
Is it too late to pull that back?
I don't know, I would have to.
I mean, is, is there going to be a penalty for doing that, or whatever?
I can't answer that question.
But you will find out.
Yeah.
So did they sign my contract?
Yeah. We have to sign it, right?
So you mean with contracts, then?
I'd have to, I'd have to go get it. And I, I didn't file it, I filed the motions on here. I'd have to pull it out.
Let's, let's take this up first, let's, let's vote on the, if we have any more discussion on the consent agenda, let's vote, give it out, and then we'll take this up.
Mr. Johnson, I'm going to check. If he has.
All in favor?
This is the one we put in any order?
This is the one without. Six forward. Now we need a motion to, uh, per paver Eddie Horner. Do we have a motion? Dan makes a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Vote. Five forward. One upstate. Do we need to discuss this, uh, while we're here on the bill? Do we need to discuss this, uh, holiday? You good with it? Ready to move on?
As long as we can see the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to just point out, I, I really don't care which company gets it. I voted for the KPM because it was the recommendation, plus a, uh, I was, when I looked at it, I thought it was sort of the unlimited phone calls, we made like over ninety calls, uh, a year, if I remember that correctly. And those can add up quickly if you've had to call an accountant or anything like that. And so being, being the history you've had with them, they've done a great job. That's, that's why we.
And I understand that, but also, we have been for a long, long time. And considering that Thomas and Douglas are local, we can give it to a local company.
Yeah, I like that it's local.
And save money, and they'll give us the calls. I just think if we can, that's what we need to do. Depending on the contract.
More discussion? Uh, recognized visitors, I guess.
Welcome.
Yeah. Welcome, everybody? Everybody's smiling anyway, or most everybody. Next thing is our MSBA monthly board update.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of June. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a Q and A board meeting. We begin with a look at the recently completed session of the Missouri General Assembly, undoubtedly one of the most unusual sessions in our state's history. The session was shut down for six weeks due to the coronavirus pandemic. And with legislators returning to Jefferson City, there were only two weeks left to pass the state budget and three weeks left to consider other legislation. Lawmakers met their constitutional deadline by passing the budget on May eighth. Budget divides the same level of funding for the foundation for the election carried into the current year, but does include a reduction in funds for student transportation. Other areas of the state budget faced significant cuts due to declining state revenue. MSBA's Associate Executive Director for Advocacy, Mike Reed, gives credit to the legislature for making K-12 funding a high priority.
But give the legislature a lot of credit. Uh, both the committees in the House and the Senate did, worked very hard to fully fund the work, that's what they're trying to do. Uh, but, uh, prospects for funds do not look good. And I think that each school district has to be fully aware that there may be withhold in the future. Uh, just because we cannot operate on a deficit, we're not fair, but we cannot operate on a deficit. So, uh, it's fully funded now, but be careful.
One way to provide the state with additional revenue during the economic downturn would be to collect internet sales taxes, the so-called Wayfair fix. Reed says he believes that idea might be considered during a special legislative session later this year.
I would look for a, a special session dealing with Wayfair in the fall, especially in light of the fact that local governments, uh, will, perhaps will be hurting for, for cash flow and for tax money. And I think that there may be a, uh, impetus to come back and work on Wayfair, uh, later in, in the year.
During the final days of the legislative session, lawmakers considered what are called omnibus education bills, where numerous individual bills are put together into single bill. Those omnibus bills contain several provisions harmful to public schools and did not pass before the legislature returned on May fifteenth. School boards and administrators throughout the state are making preparations to reopen school buildings later this summer in the midst of the coronavirus pandemic. One option now available to school districts is to start school earlier in August. Current state law prohibits schools from opening any earlier than two weeks before Labor Day. But the State Board of Education has given the Commissioner of Education the authority to waive that statute and allow schools to open before August twenty-fourth for this year only. School districts must apply for the waiver and get public input on the decision, including a public hearing. Districts must also demonstrate how the exception will benefit student learning and how the exception will minimize the transmission of the COVID-nineteen virus. Plans continue for the twenty-twenty MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators to be held September twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh in Kansas City. The event will once again feature more than one hundred sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, all in a new location at the Kansas City Convention Center. Registration for the twenty-twenty Annual Conference opened on the MSBA website on June first. And don't forget the twenty-twenty Safe Schools and Colleges Forum, sponsored by the MSBA Center for Education Safety, will be held this year in conjunction with the Annual Conference in Kansas City. Contestant school board elections in Missouri were moved to June second this year due to the coronavirus outbreak. If you are a newly elected board member, Missouri law requires that you complete eighteen and a half hours of training in your first year of service. During the coronavirus restrictions, MSBA's free certified board member essential training will be delivered all online. After the restrictions are lifted, a portion of the training will be delivered online, with the remainder in one-day classroom settings at locations around the state. You can register now for the KPM essential training to help you become an effective member of your governance team through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long. Thanks for watching.
We need to talk about this all, come on.
Yeah, I'll do that.
All right, talk about that. Public comment, we don't have any public comment, listen. We now move into our principal and director's report. Elementary Principal, Dr. Hall.
So we are in our third week of hybrid summer school. Uh, first two weeks we're averaging about sixty to seventy kids. We'll do the next two weeks with this hybrid format, and we are starting to build for July. We'll have that information out to parents on Mondays, so they can sign their kids up for July summer school during rest.
I have a question. Have, have they started construction on your door yet?
I believe so.
When do they think they might have that done?
Doors have been ordered, the holes, uh, blocks are laid, the doors have been ordered.
They don't have a completion date?
Uh, they're waiting to, um, they're waiting on the doors to get here, it won't take long after they get here. I'm just not sure when they'll be here. I don't know that for any, I just know they were ordered a week and a half ago. I just know they were ordered a week and a half ago.
Next is Middle School Principal, Ms. Patty Nelson.
So, at the middle school for summer school right now, we are offering four different classes. I included a table in our report. Obviously, the number of students we have has dropped from last year. However, their daily attendance rates has risen. I think that we can attribute that to two things. Number one, the students who are coming, they're ready to be back interacting with their peers and their teachers. Second of all, I think we can attribute that to our teachers, who are doing a phenomenal job on, uh, providing learning activities that are keeping those students engaged. We will be providing a summer school session in July, and right now, we are gathering information on our teachers, on the courses we're gonna provide, and hopefully, we'll have more students in them.
Next is our High School Principal, Dr. Teresa Nash.
Ava High School is serving currently around ninety students at, um, in various courses there at the high school. We do have some classes where students are coming in. We have some online classes. We're hoping that number's gonna grow. This year, we had a record-breaking number of courses that our teachers offered. We had sixteen teachers that have offered classes. Um, unfortunately, not all of those classes have made, but we're still hoping to get some enrollment for July. Also, this past week, we've been working on a new vocational class, uh, for the high school in the area of Health Services, Health Services 1 and 2, where our students can graduate with the CNA certification. And we did get approval from DESI last week. Um, and then, so that program has been officially approved for next school year.
I would like to thank all three of you for your reports. Uh, Ms. Swafford and Mr. Valentine are not here. Next, we go to Executive Administration Reports. Dr. Dahl.
So, they mentioned in the MSBA video about attendance hour waiver and early start waiver. We had filled out and been approved for the attendance hour waivers. Obviously, our last day of school was May 11th. We had to fill out a request to waive those hours. Um, that has been submitted and approved by the Commissioner. MSBA Conference, which they also references, the 24th to the 27th, and has been moved to Kansas City. We haven't registered everybody, um, but it is considerably more expensive just for the hotel rooms. So, if you do not plan to go, please let Mrs. Sterling or I know so we can cancel those. Um, it would... The rates are just higher in Kansas City than they are in Louisiana. So, if you could just let us know that fairly quickly, I would appreciate it. So, um, I'm gonna kind of update you on some, um, funding implications and kind of where we are with state revenue updates. Mrs. Parsick has actually seen this, 'cause I showed a lot of this to the Sauer Committee. Um, so, really, what you're looking at are the four big buckets from the state. Well, I guess the four big buckets from the state and our local efforts, our local property and real estate property and personal property tax, real estate, personal property. So, if you look at the first column under 1920, that's what the board passed last year in our state revenue. Um, that was the, the budget for the state revenue. So, ten million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, seventeen cents. We do run a higher budget than that, but that comes from various other smaller funds. These are the larger funds that we look at. So, and we budgeted a sixty, six thousand, three hundred and eight dollar state adequacy target last June, knowing that that probably would grow. But I've taken the approach since I've been here that we are conservative in revenue and higher than expected in expenses. So, we don't get caught in May and June. As we went throughout the year, that state adequacy target climbed from six thousand, three oh eight to six thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. So, I re-projected those numbers in, um, February and the first part of March. So, you'll see that, uh, 1920 expected. So, you see a significant growth, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then, if you move to the next column, there was, there's been one hundred and thirty point six million dollars withheld from K-12 education. Um, that happened two weeks ago yesterday. Is that right? A week ago, oh. A week ago yesterday. Anyway, it's been, it's been in two parts. One part in May, and then the, the big part came, um, when did we, we need the Sauer Committee? A week ago? So, it's been two weeks ago. Yeah, two weeks ago Monday, that is. So, that is what I'm predicting our actual revenue will come in at. Ten thousand, or ten million, twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. So, the governor said from the beginning, it was, the number was one point two to one point four billion dollars he was going to need to reduce in funding. Um, seven hundred million of it came from, um, new spending that he just withheld. So, new spending bills that were passing in the spring, and he withheld those. So, then he had another seven hundred million that he needed to cut. So, he has cut two hundred and, I think, twenty million at this point. So, he's got somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five hundred million to go. So, I'm predicting that there's another hundred and twenty-five million dollar withhold coming before July 1st or right after. And you heard Mike Reed talk about that. So, um, I run our state adequacy target at sixty-two-ten. So, full funding this year was sixty-three-seventy-five. Full funding next year was supposed to be at sixty-three-seventy-five. Um, it was gonna be stable. But when I drop it to, if you withhold a hundred and twenty-five million from K-12, that drops the SAT to, um, sixty-two-ten. So, that is what I am predicting that our dollars from the state will be, or dollars, our big buckets of dollars will be for revenue next year. Any questions about that slide?
We're looking at, I don't know, nine forty-eight to three twenty-three. We're looking at three twenty-three.
Yeah, next slide. I'm gonna show that exactly. Go to that next slide. So, if you look at expected revenue versus actual for 1920, okay, you're looking at five hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven ninety-nine, sixty-six is what we were reduced. So, a difference of four twenty, or a difference of five sixty-one. So, we did get COVID-19 funds. Um, we've talked about that in our previous month's meetings. Um, we are eligible for eighty-four percent of our Title I allocation. Is how they ran, that's how they figured out what Avar One was entitled to. So, that's four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine dollars. You receive the first seventy-five percent of that when you fill out the assurance statement and answer all the questions. So, we did, the, the application came out on a Tuesday. Um, it was submitted on a Thursday. Um, and then about a week and a half, ten days later, we received a check for three hundred and twenty, or a direct deposit for three twenty-one, seven fifty-six, seventy-five. The rest of it, um, the remaining portion of that four twenty-nine, um, is held back until you have collaborated with private or parochial schools within your district boundaries. So, we have done our due diligence in contacting the two private or parochial schools. And we have sent that information to DESI. So, we are awaiting them to release the rest of that money. Hundred and eight thousand. So, if you, if you take the, the COVID-19 money, um, subtract it against the, the revenue lost, you see a net revenue lost of a hundred and thirty-two thousand. Budget versus actual, so if you go back to what I budgeted, 'cause you remember we budgeted conservatively, versus the actual, we'll be up eleven thousand dollars. Um, but again, we budgeted conservatively. It's, we are still down in the expected, a hundred and thirty-two. Okay, one more slide. Tried to show this several different ways. Nineteen twenty expected versus nineteen actual. Nineteen twenty budgeted versus twenty twenty-one expected. So, what we budgeted last June versus what I'm budgeting right now is a reduction of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Nineteen twenty expected versus twenty twenty-one is six twenty-six. And then, actual versus expected. What we actually received versus what we expect to receive next year.
What was the reserve number? You said this with you to the reserve, you said a change to reserve.
So, and I don't have that exact number yet. We're working on that, 'cause we're finalizing the budget currently. Um, you know, my best guess to the Sauer Committee was bringing it down into the seventeens, but I wanna get you an actual number. I'm gonna get you a number based on those three scenarios that we presented to the Sauer Committee. One versus four versus...
Right.
Yeah, I'll get you all three of those before we ever pass a budget or pass Sowers. So, any questions about that information? Okay. Mr. Johnson, I did want to answer a question you had last month about possible storm shelters, so I did talk to a couple of people. So, in order to have a storm shelter, shelter at the elementary, we'd need to hold approximately five hundred and twenty students, K-4 plus preschool. Um, each requirement's, each person has six square feet. So, we're looking at, at the minimum, three thousand, one hundred and twenty square feet. Going price right now on commercial construction, which is what this is, is two twenty-five square foot, um, with a medium-range contractor. So, we're looking at seven hundred and two thousand for that shell. The contractor felt like, fully furnished, if we were gonna move preschools into it, so we could have those three preschool classrooms in it, playgrounds, equipments. We're gonna look at about a million dollars. This was his estimation. He'd want to explain, and I don't know that I've ever explained this to everybody, but... If you, you've heard me talk about the buckets of funds. So, you have general revenue, you have, which is Fund One. You have Teachers Fund, which is Fund Two. You have, Fund Three is Debt Service, which we don't have a levy in. We don't use any money out of Debt Service. And then, Capital Projects Funds, which is out of Fund Four. So, which is what you would use to pay for something like this. So, the state sends us, um, there's a couple of different ways, um, to get money into, um, Fund Four, 'cause we don't have a levy. You, some districts have a voted levy that goes straight to Fund Four for capital projects. We just have the base two seventy-five levy that goes into Anseldun, and then we have to transfer money to those other funds. So, the highest number, so we have a max transfer of six hundred and five thousand dollars from Fund One to Fund Four, and that is a calculation of seven percent times the SAT times your prior year-weighted ADA. The state does that calculation and sends it to us later this month. So, they give us, and then there's another that's a lower amount, that's four hundred and thirty-five. You can follow either one of those two formulas. We've chosen to follow that six oh five. So, um, we can transfer, plus there's a few other ways to get, um, a couple hundred thousand in there out of some incidental funds. Um, but probably the biggest thing I wanted to tell you is currently, out of Fund Four, we also pay lease purchases. So, we have three lease purchases in the district. Um, we have one that's still paying off the Performing Arts Center, our portion of that Performing Arts Center. We have one that was done for, um, stadium renovations that were done several years ago. And then, the HVAC that was done at the elementary and, and in this building. And so, we have them expiring in 2022, 2025, and 2027. But we pay, we transfer enough, um, from Fund One to Fund Four, we transfer four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars a year just for that, just to pay those lease purchases for principal and interest.
Is there a limit on how much you can transfer?
Yes, yeah, there is a limit. Um, and that's, that calculation DESI sends us. Like, this, this way, um, the seven percent times the SAT times the prior year-year weighted ADA was six hundred and five thousand dollars. Last year's all we can transfer. And then, we're currently spending about two hundred thousand dollars a year in capital projects. And that could be, you know, we just had to replace an HVAC unit in one of our preschools, 'cause it was a nineteen eighty-five unit, or nineteen ninety-five unit. Um, it was, it was gonna be, um, about seventy-five percent to fix it of what a new one would cost. Um, we've had, I mean, we spend a lot of money on HVAC every year. So, I just wanted to explain, um, it would, a rough calculation, it would take us, um, six, seven, eight years probably to save that, to try to keep building that up. We'd need to limit our capital projects. We could do it out of general revenue. Um, it would be much more beneficial to do a debt service loading, um, to try to pay for something like that. It would pay it off, and it wouldn't impact, um, our daily operations. I will tell you that four fifty-three that we currently pay impacts our daily operation. So, I just wanted to explain that. I didn't feel like I had all the information for you the other day, and I wanted to check some pricing.
Well, no. We're currently paying like four hundred thousand dollars, near as I can tell by looking at the audit, every year in the loans that you were talking about.
Yeah, four hundred and fifty-three.
And one of those, which is forty-five thousand or about that, expires on 25.
Yep.
And then, the other one expires on 27.
Yep, and one in 22.
Okay, how much is it?
Uh, I have to look at, I just looked at the grand total. I didn't look at them individually. I can, if I, I have a buddy who looked at them there, I had an amortization set. Um, one is a Monfita Health, um, loan, one is the Rockstar Bank. Who's the other one we paid?
UMB.
UMB.
Well, I think maybe we need to sit down and draw up not just a year-to-year plan on where we want to be five years from now, but we need to set up and have a five-year plan and a ten-year plan where we think the district should go, and hand that over to the next board, and the next board, and the next board.
And we do have a capital projects plan that we did a couple of years ago that I can give you. Absolutely. With projected costs on that.
Well, I think maybe we should all sit down, the board and the community, and have the community in the two, and the teachers, and all the staff. You know, staff has a wealth of information. We just gotta listen, and they know what's going on probably better than we do, so...
I just wanted to give that information. We do need to, um, look at a, and I told you this in the email that I sent you about the board meeting, we do need to look at another meeting, either the 25th or the 30th, are my two preferences. Obviously, it's your choice, um, to approve fiscal year budget, um, Sauer schedules, bus contracts, et cetera. With getting our revenue numbers late, those reductions from the state, we're close to having it done, but we were, we would not have, wouldn't have had it. We might have had it done today. So, um, my preference is the 25th, but I absolutely understand if you want the 30th.
We need to make that decision now. I would prefer, just that I can set up meetings to have up to three, and then, um, to go through. Is there any reason we can't do it?
Well, you won't, you won't have seen it prior, but, yeah, we can. That's up to you.
I'd kinda like for the community and everybody else to see it, just like I've seen it. They know what I'm looking at.
He asked if we could just do a open session.
Oh, look at the budget? Oh.
What do you guys think? So, you're pretty concerned, is it? Have we got the votes?
Well, I think, let's do the twenty, I vote for the 25th.
Twenty fifth, be the Thursday. Be next Thursday. Next Thursday, yeah. And then, the, the Thursday, be the Tuesday.
Dr. Dahl has already asked us to get the, uh, the big one, please. He has some personal reasons.
I can make the 25th. Twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth.
We don't have to have a vote, just leave it. Good.
In the day or in the night? Are you gonna do it in the day or the night? 'Cause, I mean, those guys have little thoughts.
We can do it at, at eight, five thirty-six, one.
Okay. I just avail, you know. I can go anytime.
Twenty fifth? Maybe I'll set us a timeline, step.
Yes.
Is it?
Yep.
Thank you. Dr. Aaron Dahl.
We have, um, really, we've sat in, I've had lots of conversations with different districts, uh, different teams of school representatives, sitting on a call today from the state, just projecting metal and finding it, just as Dr. Dahl and everybody. Trying to map out what, what these falls are gonna look like. I know I talked last month. You know, we are... You know, we are preparing for this wide range of scenarios, hoping for, we're ready to go, just like, well, I mean, that's our plan. You asked me today, what, what's August 24th look like? Our plan is to try to start as, well, perhaps, there are lots of changes coming down. So, that's, a lot of the work that we're doing this summer is preparing for those other scenarios. And again, hopefully, we don't have to use that training. We are, we're going to do some training, learn this summer on if we have to deliver an instruction remote, we've just got to be ready for it, if that presents itself. We're going to do some work. I've started on the front end of that, we're going to be meeting with teams of teachers, mapping our curriculum-wise, all right, here's what we missed at the end of last year. How do we streamline that, so we don't just always, we're not just always a quarter behind for that group of kids. So, that's, that's a lot of work that we'll be doing this summer. Sent out, I just mentioned something that you think of that. Started sending out surveys, which I know we've overwhelmed our people with surveys, just to get information. Gathering feedback from teachers. Things that went well this spring, things that were a struggle that we need to, we need to address. Ideas, concerns, looking at the next fall. You know, when this happened to us this spring, and I think that's a lot of the feedback we're getting, first time for everybody, there was no plan. You know, so basically, once, when schools got shut down, I mean, truly, the accountability, we stopped. Once we stopped being able to come to school. Our teachers put in a ton of work trying to help our kids learn everything that they could, given the circumstances we were under. You know, but now, we've, we've seen what that scenario looks like, we have an idea of what we need to do to prepare. Again, hoping that we never face that. But that's kind of, those kinds of things we're working on, mapping out that, that we'll try to tackle. Somewhere summer B E, we already talked about that in the past, we're going to maybe offer some multiple ways for teachers to do that this summer, and then just ahead into next year. Any questions for me, just as we talked about some of those thoughts, concerns, that range of things we're trying to prepare for?
So, I normally don't tell stories, but I'm going to tell one this time. So, the Corona, all this nonsense, and that's what I call it, I said, has brought a lot of things to light. So, my grandson is nine years old. And I'm not going to mention the school system that he's in, they thought it's naive, but the story I'm about to tell is available. So, of course, everyone switched to the virtual, the, you know, doing the homeschooling and everything like that. So, my husband attempted to homeschool my grandson, because my husband has masters. And he was struggling. My, my grandson is nonverbal. He actually is talking a lot more now, but he's considered nonverbal. And he had an amazing third grade teacher, absolutely amazing, reminds me of a lot of the teachers I've met here. She was over the top with him and being able to deal with him, and make him a part of the whole school. But my husband was struggling with him to get into, get in, get into this, because, you know, the classroom in virtual is a little, you know, a little different. So, he went to her, to her, and he said, "How do you do this? How, how do you get him to do this?" You know, how do you? She said, "You know, I struggled when he became a student in my class." And I went to his second grade teacher, and I asked her, "How did you deal with him?" She said, "I didn't deal with him, he was a warm chair." Then, she went to his first grade teacher and said, "How did you deal with him?" "I didn't, he was a warm chair." Now, in my heart, I don't believe I would ever hear that from an average school teacher, from everyone I have met. My grandson is behind because they didn't, these extreme, extreme intelligent young men. His, he from his IQ higher than his father. But anyway, um, he's a numbers chopper. And she learned that how you associate it to him is through numbers, not through words, through numbers. And she worked with him and did good. But when I was told that he was a warm chair for two years, that devastated me. And I have contacted the superintendent of that particular school district, today, we had a nice chat. And we're moving Phoenix, that's my grandson, to a private school this next year because evidently, that particular school cannot deal with him. And I would hate to think that that happens here. I'm not saying it doesn't, I, in my heart, I know it doesn't. I know too many of the teachers and everything, I know it doesn't. But the Corona has brought out these things that we didn't know before. So, my concern, and my whole point in this story is, we had to pass, students, we had to pass them. And I've asked this question already before. Are we going to be prepared, and you just brought it up, to get them to the level they need to be to have passed that grade? Do you feel that, that our, as good as our teachers have done, I'm sure that's true.
No, that's the work, that's the work that we're taking on this summer. That is mapping out what that looks like. Because, you know, that's what I was, probably did a poor job of describing. You know, if we just say, okay, we're going to take first quarter and teach last year's fourth quarter, well, then everybody, every kid is a quarter behind all the time. Also, that, that's it, and our teachers, you guys hear me use terms? My teachers get ready to laugh at me when I talk about the spreadsheets I do and things like that. You know, the teachers have done a ton of work identifying, hey, the example I always use, I always use before, if we miss 100 days because of snow, what do your kids have to have when they leave your class? From now on, I'll say, hey, if we get close for the coronavirus, what do your kids have to have when they leave your class? Our, our teachers have already done that work to identify, these are the absolute musts that our kids have to have when they leave my class. You know, that work, it does, it takes time. They did it individually, then they did it with a grade above and below to make sure, hey, we agree. These are the things. So, we are, that's, we're going to sit down. These are the things I did not get to. How do they fit with what I already do in this next grade? And then what are the things that, hey, they are standalone, they're critical, we've got to teach them on their own? But no, I mean, that, we have a plan mapped out, and it's going to be a lot of work, I mean, it just is. And our teachers are, we used to say, it, uh, they got to care enough that, you know, the easy thing for that teacher to do was, was to ignore the challenging student and go on.
And she didn't, she went and she, you know.
You know, I, I believe what you said, our, our teachers care enough, hey, this is going to be hard for both of us. You know, I'm going to keep asking, hey, are you with me, are you doing this, are you? Are you care enough to do it?
I shared with that particular superintendent that I'm on the school board today. And that I would hate to think that I would ever hear of that, but I do not think I would ever hear of that name. And so, I just wanted, wanted that story, I wanted everyone to understand how important it is that we get these kids, you know, we get them ready.
It's the most important thing to do.
That, that's it, and that's why I'm sitting here right now.
So, Mr. Dalton and I had a conversation this morning, this afternoon, he goes, I just need you to listen to me and tell me if you think it's a good idea. But he is, he has a significant, I mean, a significant, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars worth of professional development money through title funds, through grant funds. And he's wanting to focus that primarily in July for this work, to bring teachers in, to be able to do this work, so when we get the first day, Mrs. Bedeker's not trying to figure out what happened in third grade, she's already going to know, so she's already got her plan. She's moving forward, so.
I just had to ask. And I figured if I told you the story, you'd understand why I was asking the question. So, thank you.
Hopefully, we'll be, we'll see good summer school members in July, and we'll be able to do a little bit of that work in July.
Yeah, I'm sure that will be our.
That'll help. We don't know that until we start getting kids in seats. You know, there's lots of, I mean, we heard everything, I've heard everything from two weeks ago, every time a kid got on the bus, you guys will appreciate this, we were going to take their temperature before they got on the bus, and we were going to record that temp. Talked to, um, talked to the gentleman in charge of Department of Health and Senior Services today. He said, "That's a little unrealistic for you to do."
Oh, good. I'm real so.
He said, "So, you know, yes, you might take it when you get to the school, but you've got to figure out how to not have a logjam getting into the building." He said, "It's not so much that, it's, it's what's your plan if you do have a kid that has a high temper, showing signs, and what's your plan if you do have a kid that is positive?" So, it's not about everything you're doing to prevent it, because we're doing those things to prevent it. It's about what's your plan if it does happen, or when it does happen. So, it, today's phone call was the best phone call I've been on, because everybody else has been doing one. And this guy was like, hey, we're going to have, we need to have school, we need to have recess, we need to have athletics.
They need to get their.
You know, we need to have music, we need to have band, where everybody else is, I've, I've heard other people saying, well, you shouldn't have music class, you shouldn't have PE, you know, you should only recess one class at a time. I mean, and this, this gentleman was like, that's unrealistic.
Well, the kids have been so turned upside down with everything that's happened. They need to come back to some kind of normalcy what they're used to.
You have to take precautions, and they have to.
No, I understand that, but.
But, something I didn't update you on, so the county has received 1.5 million dollars in COVID relief dollars as well. Our county commission led, any commission in the state that I know of, they were the first ones to contact the schools. And said, hey, what do you need? What can we help supply you? And whether that be hand sanitizer, whether that be thermometers, there, we submitted about $50,000 worth of equipment to them, and they've approved it. We've started purchasing it, and they're going to refund that money to us. So, there are several counties in southwest Missouri that are, that are locking schools out and saying, you received COVID-19 money. Well, that money is helping stabilize our budget, we moved all of that money to salaries. It's helping stabilize our budget. So, I just appreciate our county commission, and I would say that, um, they contacted us early, and we've been in meetings with them for two months.
Good. I'm not, I think it was last morning, maybe a little before that, you said that the actual number of students that actually had internet service through the house to take the work with 50%. Has anybody in the public, any idea what you're going to do with that?
So, so our number, so the number that had consistent reliable internet was about 50/50. We had, oh, that's what I look, 64 or 65% that actually had internet, it just wasn't consistent. So, here's the issue on, on our end. Some of the emergency funds that are available, you know, has to be for either, what he's talking about was health, equipment, things like that, there's some funds in. The potential would be available for helping students have better access. So, here to me is a potential issue, so so that gap from 50% to have a live internet to the ones that had some kind of internet. So, say we were able to purchase a hotspot or some kind of Wi-Fi, for those things, that probably helps. There's a percentage of ours, it wouldn't matter if we put a hotspot there, if I don't have cell service.
No cell service.
It's not going to change anything.
And for summer school, we have, we've purchased 20 hotspots to check out to kids for summer school, and it's pretty, we can turn them on, turn them off as we need to, so we can use them for summer school, so, and they are tied to that Chromebook that we handed as well, and that runs back through our filter. It only works with that Chromebook, and it runs back through our filter. So, we meet those federal guidelines of filtering. So, we do have plenty of those that we are checking in.
Those costs are soon.
So, per month.
Per month.
So, per, per, per hotspot, per month is $41.55. To purchase the hotspot was $180. We're going to get some of the, we're going to get, I think the county's going to refund part of that money to us, because that's part of the money they can spend.
So, about $2 a day?
Yeah. Oh, it's not bad at all. We, we started with 20. And as, and I'll, I get them next day, so if I call her and say, hey, I need 40 more, I'll have, if I call her by 3 o'clock, I'll have them the next day by noon.
And then we just hold them until?
Yeah, and then they turn them back in, and then we can turn them off.
Those hotspots are through a cellphone provider?
Through Verizon.
All through Verizon.
Something else that came out of that call today that to me ties to what you just asked. You know, at that time, we shut down, you know, five schools were given, which is so extreme on, on how it could be passed and people's level. What that came out of the meeting today, he said, listen, we're talking about a close contact that I need to be concerned about. They're talking about inside six feet for 15 to 20 minutes. Do you think it would be considered an exposure that's significant? That's, is that the phrase you use, a significant exposure? So, if you're just in the room with somebody, that's, that's a positive. You're not a court. You know, so, say we did have a situation where the student did not have internet. To me, there are other scenarios that, that we would be able to try to provide, you know, whether it's bringing them in the meeting in small groups, time to a week, you know, even if we were checking. To me, there are just some things that we would be able to try to do. If the spring, we shut down, we were told, yeah, that's a very long idea. Just as we came more convention.
Anything else? The governor has, he is not going to make the decision to not start a school. It will be up to the local school district and local health authority. He's not going to give a mandate. He told, he told us that on his last conference call as well. And Desi will not either. Okay.
So, I, now, we're planning on starting a school on August 24th? I mean, we don't, but we don't know exactly what the athletics and the band and all that stuff is going to look like just yet.
Not completely. We are, you know, we are currently having camps here. We did read today, we are going to start letting them compete against a few teams. So, we use basketball as a, as an example. So, we will let them compete against two other schools. But we're not going to go to a big shootout with four schools. You know, our big football camp that they go to every year, that's not until July, so we'll make that decision later. So, we are going to start letting them do some more stuff, and so, we're trying to limit the exposure. And coaches seem to be happy with that.
But loosening up at the same time.
Still doing hand sanitizer, still sanitizing equipment after it's been used, all of that. Taking temperatures, we're still doing all of that stuff when they come. We're keeping logs of all those kids, so we know who was there each day, if somebody has a high temp, so we can backtrack that without.
Next is our discussion and action items. We need to adopt the 2021 lunch pricing.
So, Mr. Dalton runs a hunger-free calculation each year, based on how much money we spend, how much revenue we receive. It's a calculation that runs through Desi. We've been very careful about raising our lunch prices slowly. We do get penalized if we don't go up enough. Our recommendation is the elementary, so if you remember, breakfast is free across the board to everybody. So, nobody pays for breakfast, the whole district. But our elementary lunch price would be $1.90, middle school, high school lunch price would be $2, and then adult will move to $2.80.
Need more than that?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve the lunch price.
So, you know, as I went off the board the last time, everyone knew I was kind of against OPA pretty much. I don't think that they have the ability to do what we really need to do here. So, it's hard for me to do this, is this going to be effective or obloosely?
That's the calculation then.
That's just what it's going to be, no matter what. I would like to request, can I get a copy of the OPA contract for the one, four year and the one year?
Yeah.
know, is that something that you can get out of easy?
Uh, I'd have to look at, have, we agreed to that five-year deal.
Was it a four-year deal?
Five. And this is the last year.
Right. That's last year, four.
Yeah, what we're gonna do, our plan was to do, start looking, put RFP out in October, so we'd make a decision whether we're gonna do it ourselves, whether we're gonna contract with our own company. That was our plan. But I can get that one.
Still need a motion to approve the lunch pricing. Motion made, but then we have a second. Mark seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Looks like six oh would pass. Next item, adopt the twenty-twenty-one milk prices.
It's really consistent at forty cents. Buddy Erby is our supplier.
So, we need a motion on that. Need a motion to approve the milk prices. Then make some motion, do we have a second?
Also.
Any seconds? Any discussion? All those in favor? I can say so.
Well, you do get that milk with your lunch, it's not over about two dollars or one ninety, it's.
Do they still get the milk out to elementary like earlier in the day, like we used to back then?
So, they, they get, I think they get milk in with breakfast?
With breakfast, yeah.
You're thinking about.
And is that free for them at that time?
Yes, yes. We go through a lot of milk.
All that comes from, through Buddy earlier?
Yeah, Highland area. He's the local distributor.
Yeah.
It's through Highland.
Yeah.
He's, he's got delivery.
He's a different person. Our next item is discussion regarding route number one.
So, Mr. Stillings currently operates route number one, or is kind of through the end of the nineteen-twenty school year, the board will need to decide if they wish to renew that contract with Mr. Stillings for the twenty-twenty-one school year, if they wish to go another direction. We'll say that Lance and his driver have done a good job for us and for the district. He wishes to keep the contract, he was going to be here tonight, but he's on the job up in Rogersville and couldn't get off in time to get here, he didn't call me this afternoon, but it is the board's option what to do, he does not have a right to contract, he is on a yearly contract.
I'd like to make a motion to extend his contract for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Motion bitten.
Say that again, please.
Extend his contract. Motion's been made to extend the contract with Mr. Stilling. Do we have a second?
I say.
Mark seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion paid.
Okay, so what would you like for me to do with the contract? What would you like for me, what would the board like for me to do with the contract?
With the right to contract?
With, with route number one.
Okay, so, we do have some people interested in purchasing it under the old original type that we've got, we'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to put that in a newspaper for sale. What was that price, thirty-five?
So, the original price when it was bought from Mr. Harple was thirty-five thousand, I'd have to go back and look.
Four hundred and sixty-six, eighty-seven?
I will say that is not what that route is paid currently.
And it wasn't, but, I mean, it wasn't before, what are you saying on that?
So, that route mileage is not being paid at the rate. The number of miles driven, Mr. Stilling's route are not the miles that were turned in by Mr. Harple, that Mr. Harple drove.
But is it before, when he first took over, when Harple first took the route?
I don't know, that was, I mean, he's, Gary had it a long time, so, I mean, he drove approximately eighty-one miles a day, and the route's fifty-one miles a day now.
My understanding that right before, well, at the end of the year before, Stillings bought it, that there was a detour, or so many miles a day.
That was just, that was for a short period of time at the beginning of that school year when the breakers out, had been, we paid eighty-one miles, we paid a few extra there for about a month, but the route mileage was at eighty-one, about eighty-one miles a day.
Was there any extras on the route last year?
I do not believe so. I can tell you what the route paid last year.
For the fiscal year?
Thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
What did it pay the year before?
Forty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
That's just a mileage drop, is?
Yes, so you went from fifty, eighty-one, eighty, eighty-something to, well, I can tell you exactly.
So, it's about a one-thousand-dollar drop, one year to the next?
Correct.
So, we arrived at thirty-five thousand?
Are you trying to make a dead man a good?
No, sir. I'm just saying.
The school, the school run that route, it must have been.
I'm just saying the route changed, that's what I'm saying.
Well, let's make it clear, Gary Harple was not a good man.
He was a good man.
He did.
He is a friend of mine. I'm saying the route changed. Fourteen, that's, we don't want to sell it for an inflated amount, it won't be worth who's buying it, is what I'm trying to say.
So, the original routes to all, to all these guys, was that mileage, and then whenever the school bought it out, they went into eighty percent, is that correct?
Correct.
And then they bought it back at that same eighty percent?
So, the, the route, two years ago, ran fourteen, fourteen thousand miles. The route last year ran eighty-six seventy-eight.
What was that number, thirty-two thousand?
Thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five oh one.
Talking about what, three thousand difference?
First one year to the next.
Oh, versus split, it was paid by Gary Harple, and what was?
What was? Yeah, that'd be, that'd be correct.
So, the thirty-two, is that what, the route was paid last year at?
That's what it paid last year.
At, at current price on?
Eighteen twenty.
And, and the?
Correct. That's not the gas overage, that's the base rate plus nerve pain.
Yeah.
Thirty-two four twenty-five oh one.
I'm having trouble here, what are we trying to figure out?
I'm just saying that it would not, in my, that if we sold the route, sold the right to contract, that thirty-five thousand dollars to route is paid by that.
Trying to figure out.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to explain.
Traditionally, routes always sold at what they would make a year. About thirty-two, thirty-two and some change is what it brought last year. Yeah, thirty-two four twenty-five oh one.
If it paid, and if it was at eighty percent, it's twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
Well, I mean, these, these guys, when they first bought their route, they paid the full amount of their, you know, way back.
I just.
And then, and then the eighty was what the, and then they paid it back, so really, we're still at this number.
That's correct.
What number is that, you're pitching? The thirty-two four twenty-five.
So, we're paid, so what made last, what did we pay last year for route number one?
The district bought the route back?
We bought the route back for what he paid Mr. Harple for, that was at thirty-five thousand. It's a change.
Wow.
That's what he paid. So, we, we paid what was in that right to contract, the amount that was listed in the right to contract?
If the, if the route went up for sale, would Lance be interested in driving it until that, if I, you know, if you talked to him?
I haven't asked that question. It might be, but I don't know.
I know whenever we, whenever Dr. Waller was in, they had three.
When I got here.
And we, and we had some people running it, would the school be capable of that?
If I can find somebody to drive it?
For a short term, there, there are some buyers that are interested.
Currently, I have, the people that I know of, that are, have their CBL, can drive a bus, are private for contractors, like district evidence, but I don't, I just don't ask them.
What was the law, you're a used to own a bus, what do you think of this price?
So, thirty-two thousand? So, I'm pretty sure I understand what the contract is.
That's exactly what paid, with no gas overage.
I don't think we should sell them. That's my opinion, I don't think, I don't think, I mean, I've said that before, we've had this conversation, I mean, I still believe that, but I don't think that it's, I'm not trying to, Lance came and wanted to sell his, and we bought it, and I'm not trying to, I think if other drivers wanted to sell it, I'm not trying to take any money for route that they own, it's a contract, I understand that, but once we have one, we bought Lance's by his, it was, it was his opinion, it was his request that we buy it, and I just don't think that it's wise for us to sell them back.
Well, there's a request of a lot of voters out there too, that think a lot better, so, and they like the way it's, they like the way it's established, the way it's set up.
I think there's a lot of voters that, that it's very idealized.
That's my.
Make a motion and sell it for thirty-two thousand, whatever it was you said it should be.
Four twenty-five oh one?
I forgot, we had, we had a motion on it.
I was, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, my motion would be to put it up for sale, put it in the Douglas County Harrell for thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and one cent. Right to contracts.
Do you have a deadline you'd like to work back at?
What's that?
Would you like those proposals back?
We'll run the, at two weeks, and two and a half, and after two weeks, if we got some people in a position.
I have a motion. Route number one up for sales. It's in Harrell for two weeks, do have effect. And second, any discussion?
Are there any other, any other school districts that, that do this, that sell a right to contract, sell a contract for eating contracted labor?
Plainview has at least one, they're just up to it.
They have one, one route that, that they own the right to contract?
As far as I know, Lance owns it.
And they own the contract, they, they would have to, the school would have to buy it back?
I don't know if the school bought it back, but Lance owns the rights to that route.
I've just talked to a lot.
He had it up for sale.
I just, we're the only ones that I'm aware of that do that, I've talked to a lot of people in other school districts, and I don't think they've ever done this before.
There's another district or two, whether they have enough, whether they have the right to contract or not, but there's another district or two, and I can't name them, that they do, there is individual contractors.
Oh, I know there's individual contractors, and, and I'm not against contracted labor and contracted drivers, just the owning of the route, the right to contract, I don't, I've never, I've talked to a lot of people in other school districts, other board members.
Where that originally came from, where it was a year ago, the contractor, I think, they could take the bus back, not pay them anything for that.
Yeah, and, and that's changed, and they now own it, I understand that, but once we, once we bought one back, why, why would we wanna sell it?
I, I would get it, why would we wanna keep them? When the system works perfect the way it is, why would you wanna pull them in and divide the organization up, which will make it fail? So, I might look at it totally opposite, you, I see, why would you wanna keep one? Why wouldn't we wanna spend thirty-some thousand dollars and hold it, whenever they will hold it for us? I mean, I'm, I mean, I don't, you're looking at it one way, but I look at it exactly the opposite.
Yeah.
There is no, there is no way, no reason for us to go spend thirty or forty thousand dollars and buy all of them away from you guys.
No, I don't wanna buy, I don't, I don't necessarily think we, that I wanna buy.
But you wanna keep them if they wanna get rid of them.
Yeah, I don't think.
Lance had people interested in that route, before he made the deal with you guys.
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't hear that from Lance, I didn't talk to Lance about that, I just know he came to the board and wanted, requested us to purchase him.
So, did two people tell me they would have bought it, and they didn't even know anything about it being for sale?
It never went up for sale?
No, it wasn't for sale, no, I, yeah, I agree with that, we requested it, we bought it, we decided to, and I just don't think, I mean, we're the only district that I'm aware of, well, I don't think that anybody does do the right to contract that.
How many years does it work for? How many years does that work down here? Our transportation system?
Back and forth?
I've talked, you know, I've been at the seminars and stuff with other board members and superintendents and assistant superintendents, I've talked to a few that really thinks this is a really good idea. Yeah, whenever I tell them all the deals where they, they, they take care of the buses, they, they buy the insurance, they're, they're floorboarded, then I tell them they buy all the fuel, and then I tell them how much it costs per mile, and they can't, they can't even believe it, I mean, they say they're gonna check into it, but then they probably get on the internet and see the big uproar that we have, and they probably think, well, I'm gonna bring that to my school. So, we have certain people in the community that just, they keep it in the uproar the whole time.
And I.
When it worked really good by itself.
Well, I understand, I'm not saying, I'm not arguing with you about the contracted drivers, it's just the right to contract, I've taught, had the same conversations, and them buying their fuel, we contract them with the, with the two ways we pay them, the base contract, or the base pay, and then the mileage pay, and then they cover their own buses, insurance, I've explained all that too, but the right to contract is what nobody, no, not anybody say that they've ever done that, or.
It's kind of like that milk route, it's just like that milk route that Buddy Erby runs, it's like red routes, they buy into that right to contract.
I don't think they own it from the company though, I don't think they own it from the company.
Yes, they do, they've got pretty good rights on that.
Oh, they might, I've, I've looked into a couple of them, and they didn't actually own it, they buy it from the company.
I do the taxes of some of them, and they do.
I mean, it, it's evident that we agree and disagree, so.
Yeah, you're right.
Let's move on with that motion, or, or discussion.
I'll throw one more thing in, I talked, I talked to two bus bar managers, one of them said, my boss told me to keep my mouth shut and not get involved in what was going on down at Ava, but I can tell you this, Ava better keep what they got, 'cause it's way better than what we got, and he was the manager of the bus bar.
I guess we just talked to different people, so, same, same thing.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Or all, all opposed? Two, so we can pass, four to.
Get it in the paper next week?
We got a couple other things, we need all our own transportation here. Larry, would you front the center, please?
See, it's a good thing you combed your hair.
With the School Bus Association, if the school board dropped the legal suits, the lawsuits, and all legal actions against you guys, would you guys drop your lawsuit?
Certainly.
Okay. We'll see what we can do about that.
What do you mean, our lawsuit? That we sue the drivers?
Litigation.
The litigation?
Yeah, litigation.
All litigation.
The only reason the school did that was from our attorney's recommendation, because they decided to have a lawsuit.
But there's still a lawsuit, right?
But any attorney you'll talk to? But any attorney you'll talk to will say that they advise you to make the countersuit. It was just a countersuit because they chose to go with the lawsuit.
It was recovering cost. We'll see what we can do to get that cleared up.
So, can I make a motion on that?
Do we need to do that open or closed?
It's legal.
Huh?
It's legal.
Can it be open?
And that's legal, things should be done in close.
Doesn't have to be, though.
Doesn't have to be. Doesn't have to be. Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion that the Ava School District, R1, drops all litigation.
And counter claim.
Hmm? And counter claim, and any, any lawyer litigation or counter claim against, uh, anything to do with the transportation system that we currently use. Against any, uh, person individually, or any certain route, or the association as a whole. Sorry, DJ. This is one mixer I got at all.
I got it.
You're going to let me do it?
No, we did not. I got anything to do with transportation.
Sure. Uh, yeah, any litigation, or any, you know, anything we've got going with lawyers, basically, against these guys. Against the transportation system. Individual routes, uh, drivers. We, I, I, you know, I'm making a motion to end all of it. Individual contractors.
It's just association, it's just.
We're good?
Sorry.
Do you want to second?
I did. I seconded it.
Dana, seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say, it seems like there's a little bit of misinformation on the way this went. Because you're, the way it sounds like, you're saying that we are making that lawsuit, and it was just a countersuit to the driver's initial lawsuit.
You guys, you guys forced a removal of the rights contract over a policy issue that actually wasn't even created until the month we did it, just about. It was in September, there was a policy change. You guys.
Actually, I, I think you're incorrect. You, you, we have, we, we tried to meet with them several times and get their input several times. And we did, we did, they absolutely did. I mean, that's, that's just the truth. I mean, that's what needs to be spread. And we tr, we did try to meet with them, we did try to get information.
I sat in the boardroom, and there was never, ever a negotiation by the school board with the bus drivers till like February, after the litigation started in December.
What about the board?
The only person that met was Dr. Dial with the bus drivers.
Right.
Nobody from the board met officially with the bus drivers.
But that was Dr. Dial's job, to bring information back to the board, correct?
Dana?
That's not true.
What's, what I just said?
What Dan just said.
Oh.
Okay. Because I did go and meet with the bus drivers. And they will testify to that.
And that, you told us as you walked in, you were not there as a board member?
That's true.
That's right.
But I did go. Okay? So they have, they have been, and you know, we have tried to reach out. And Mark and I did go too. Okay? I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, we have, to a point, we have tried.
But you never really officially met until February, after it was already long gone.
Listen, Dan, where you remember, you, you were here.
Yes.
You remember that, I believe, I probably have it months wrong, I believe it was August we talked about this? Uh, when did we approve the bus cameras?
August.
Okay, August we approved the bus cameras. And that was after Troy, I think, you, you made your original, you, you brought it up.
I was all for the cameras.
All for it?
But I was, and you guys weren't at that time.
Only reason was because the recommendation was that we didn't want to put in the budget.
You guys were not for the cameras. And I'll tell you what happened. You guys, you guys turned it into a, all, all they needed was simple negotiations to show that you guys were responsible for everything. It's your equipment going on their bus. And you guys wouldn't, you wouldn't listen, you wouldn't go, you wouldn't.
We didn't listen.
No, you wouldn't. You, you gave them a homemade document that wasn't even written by a lawyer. If it's written by a lawyer, we need to fire that lawyer. It was a, it was a, it was a homemade document. And then you took this, this right here, policy GBCB, that was just changed back in like September, and you took one little part of that, and you tried to turn that into that staff conduct. And I offered to come and explain that staff conduct, what that meant though, in that contract. Did I not, to you?
You should have muted it.
No one knew about it. Dan said it never got to him.
We had the contract.
You have what contract?
We had, we had the contract. We had the contract. We knew what it was.
You, you twisted a staff conduct here. You're here just to.
What do you mean, you twisted it? I guess I don't understand how you make that claim.
That, that part of that contract was about dress code, about the way you conduct yourself, about use of tobacco. It was never meant to be, to change a, change a policy and then force something into their contract. Whenever they accepted that GPS and that radio, it was negotiated properly. And it was actually put into their contract.
Negotiated.
But the way, but the way you tried to put the cameras in was by forcing it, by manhandling it in there.
No, that's, that's.
That's exactly right.
So that was after many months of discussing it, and, and discussing options that the drivers, um, well, I believe it was Larry Benson communicated to Dr. Dial to bring back to the board, then we discussed it in open session on the terms of these. We had, I mean, many months, and we talked about it, I believe, August, about the terms that they wanted, and we discussed those. It was the negotiation that we were doing. That we were, we were looking at them. This, yeah, I mean, you remember the stop arm cameras, uh, was one of the terms, the viewing at home was one of the terms they wanted, and one of the, and one of the other was no live viewing.
I was, and we, and the part about the viewing at home and that, but I did hear about it.
Okay.
That can't be done anyway, but.
What?
A bus driver can't view cameras at home. I mean, you can't view that.
Right, so we were.
That was dropped pretty soon anyway.
But that was dropped.
That wasn't even a long-term, that was just like popped up and it.
I'm not arguing that those were the terms that were broad, and then you're saying that we just didn't listen to anything, and then we just forced it on. It's just not true.
There was nothing in there. If someone was to steal that data and use it against them.
I'm sorry?
There was nothing in your papers that you gave them showing that the district was responsible. If someone was to steal that data out of that recorder and do something to it, the district would have been sued, and they would have been sued. There was nothing in there from you guys making them guys not liable. Period. And there's other issues that wasn't in there. You shouldn't have had a lawyer to look at it.
He did look at it.
At the one you, you gave to them?
Yep.
Well, then you should get rid of him next.
And it was, it was way more detailed than the regular. It wasn't, it wasn't that vague. So, so, but going back, I just wanted to address this, since we're discussing it. You know, whenever you said that we were not for it, we weren't for budgeting in, it wasn't budgeted in that school year. We agreed with the recommendation, let's wait till the next school year. So in August, then we were for it. We were for student's sake, we just wanted to budget in on a new school year, where we could do that from the beginning.
But, but, but drivers were never against the cameras, okay? They were against the way you tried to put them into the bus. That, that's what it boils down to.
So we, we purchased the cameras. Well, I was under, I, I was under the impression that the drivers wanted the cameras, when this was originally brought up.
They were fine with the cameras, but that's the way you guys presented it, the way you should have put it in the bus.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
Without prob, that's how they feel, not me.
I'm sorry that you all feel that way. I, I'm sorry that you all feel that we didn't give you any options. Because I do feel.
You all feel like they've been bullied.
You did.
I feel like we did. I feel like we tried to communicate. Dr. Dial tried to come to, that's what I was told, that he tried to come and, and get some agreement terms. We discussed them in, in at least one meeting, I think two open session meetings, and then we got nothing. And then we even, Dana and I were assigned to meet with them, and we were trying to work out a date, but it took two and a half months to, to, for, for you all to agree on a date that we could meet.
Oh, we had a date set, you canceled it.
I didn't. I don't, that's not true. That's not, not to my knowledge. I'm sorry. That's, I never heard anything about that. This is, this is part of, this is, I just want to make sure that.
We will get cameras in there.
Well, let's, let's fix it.
We'll definitely get it done.
Let's fix it.
Yep, we're going to fix it.
I think we need to get a couple of board members. President of the Bus Association, maybe another board, bus contractor. And sit down and work out an agreeable solution to it.
With the lawyer?
Well, yeah. You could work out, you could work out the solution, then take it to an attorney and have it written out.
That is the idea, that, that's what we did too.
A usage agreement, sit down and work it out, and let's get the problem solved, the controversy over, and move on down the road.
That'd be great.
Does it do, guys?
I saw whoever wanted to use it, you wanted it.
And, and the floor is open for a motion to that effect.
We already have a motion.
Oh, that's right. That's right. We're going to clear that one first, Paul.
Probably already done there.
No, we didn't.
We've had a lot of discussion.
We've had first and second.
Give her first and second, Paul.
Can you read that motion back, please?
If the Ava R1 drops counter claim suit, or anything to do with transportation litigation, with transportation route owners, contractors.
All right, we have a motion. It's seconded. Discussion, any more discussion? If not, we vote. Everybody in favor? Five, four. Everybody against? One against. Motion passed.
You motion then? For the.
I'll make a motion that, uh, President and Vice President, Representative Board with the bus drivers to try to reach a settlement and come back to us with whatever we need to do.
Use, use a lawyer towards the end of it to make sure we got it right?
Right. Really, I honestly think that both parties should be represented by an attorney this time. Not just one attorney to do both. I don't know where you're going to find somebody that, you know, if you go get a divorce, you're going to get two attorneys. We just don't want the attorneys to start fighting back and forth, and the attorneys are the only ones that are happy. And once it's all, just go away.
You're going to put a cost on the drivers, more cost than what they've already put out with litigation, if you're going to have an attorney there.
They don't have to do it. I'm just recommending that they do it.
We have a motion on the floor to, uh, for the President, the Vice President to meet two bus contractors, the President and one other contractor, to negotiate an agreement.
I'll second it.
We have a second from Dana. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five, four. All those opposed? One opposed.
Bill? Bill, did you ever hand up?
Yeah, I did. Who's going to meet with you and Law?
Yes.
I think it'll be Mark and Law. You know, I'm not, I, I'm telling you all about here, I did not vote for Mark Henry, but he'll tell you what he thinks. And I think he'll look at the situation, and you do what you want.
What?
Do we need to do anything else while we're still on transportation?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, that authorize the Board President, Vice President to, uh, have authority to contact Transpar and get all communications that were done between the district, the attorney, and all the parties involved in this.
You done all that, Dave?
Involved in the report, you mean, not in this?
In the Transpar report.
For, for study.
We have a motion. On the floor. We need a second.
I'll second it.
Dana, second. Any discussion?
Hold the motion again.
I want to authorize, Solol, and Troy, to go back and find, well, to go through the, be authorized to go to Transpar and the attorney, and what else. There's no attorney involved that I know of. I want to know what Mick has had to say about all this. He wasn't involved in any of it. He was furnishing papers. To Transpar? He, he furnished opinions on what he felt was correct and not. Not to Transpar, to the district. Then, all the legal stuff that was done during this entire thing. I want to, I want to back to the board. Yes. I want to know who said what when it was done.
All right, let's clarify that a little bit.
Okay. I want a motion that also can be made. I want a motion that we get all the information from Transpar of every communication that was done with the school. Also, any legal information that was done during this, I want to know what it was. I don't know exactly how you need me to.
We may have to have a motion done. One of the. And we have a second from Dana. Any more discussion?
Is that what you want? Do you want to do that, Law?
Do you want to do what?
That motion. Just seems like we're beating a dead horse.
We got a motion on the floor, and we got a second. Any discussion?
That's, I think, feels like this Transpar thing, we've beaten a dead horse here. We've backed the horse, did.
You know, there's, there's a lot of controversy out there about the Transpar deal. And if nothing else, it'll clarify everything.
You think it will?
I hope it does.
All right, I see.
That's part of the controversy.
If it does, that'd, that'd be great. We'd like. Doesn't have to be a Transpar, just.
If it does, it'd be fantastic. And.
What do we, what do we think we're going to find there that we haven't already discussed, I guess?
Actually, I don't know what we're going to find. You know, uh, I don't know. I guess that's.
What do you, what do you think, Dan? I don't know that. Is there something that we haven't discussed?
I don't know. Any other discussion? We vote? All in favor? Five, four. All opposed? One opposed. One opposed. Motion passed. Any other business while we're on the transportation? Next item up is scheduled tax rate hearing.
So our tax rate hearing would be at a regular August board meeting. We just do it at six fifteen to set the tax levy. August twenty, two thousand and twenty. Okay, it's August twentieth. It's a Thursday. Be a regular scheduled August board meeting for a tax rate hearing. We do it at six fifteen, it says six thirty.
We need a motion?
Yes.
We need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Troy makes your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mark, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Motion passed. Any other business we need to discuss? We need a motion to adjourn and go into closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion. Dan, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed, six oh. Meeting is adjourned.
I'm the call, I'm the call.